Okay. It is 5:01 PM, so in the interest of everybody's time, I want to jump right into these meetings as quickly as we can. First on the agenda this evening is a special joint meeting with the Board of Finance and Board of Education. For the record, today is Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. We have members of both the Board of Education and the Board of Financing, of Finance, excuse me, attending in person and via Zoom. So I'm just going to read for the record. Attending in person, I have Board of Finance member Deb Iannacito, Board of Finance member Lorraine Pesky, Board of Finance member Jim Wright. Participating via Zoom, Board of Finance member Wendy Trab, and Board of Finance members Christopher Bayes and Christopher Anderson. So full Board of the Board of Finance. Board of Education, we have co-chairs, Mr. Corey, Mr. Pretis. We have Mr. Berger, Mr. Kisco. Thank you. Kristen Conway. I know I always want to call her by a maiden name. Ellen Hona and Mr. Putnam. Thank you. So full board, forum for both. Before we get into the agenda items, could we stand and pledge the flag? All right. So the purpose of this meeting was called, this is something, a little departure from what we've done in prior years as part of a budget review. So this would be a review of the fiscal year 2425 capital plan. Something that always is delivered to the Board of Finance the end of December and then not discussed again, including in budget adoption until that 11th hour. So item one on this, if I can have a motion to open the floor to review 2425 budget goal.
So moved.
I see Mr. Wright, I see Mr. Anderson. And because this is a joint meeting, I need all to vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So I'm going to turn this over to the co-chairs or the superintendent? I'm not sure. Okay. Superintendent to go over the budget, uh, capital plan.
Mayor, we're going to need him at the podium, please.
Okay. Or, you know what? The microphone doesn't look like it's on. The one, yeah, there's.
Okay. Can we hear better now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, my apologies. I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Facilities and our Director of Finance, Mr. Pergola and Mr. Petrazelli, to present the capital plan.
Okay. So what we have here is our capital plan up for 2425. We have prioritized some of the tasks that need to be done along with the particular location they are in our facility study. Most of the stuff that we're looking to take care of was pulled out of our facility study that was prioritized inside the facility study also as far as high priority, low, medium, and what have you. It went one through, uh, one through four in a priority list. But this particular list, as you can see, is broken down because last year we handled some of these stuff that was on the high priority. So if you have, you know, any questions on all of these, if you want me to go through all of them, or if you want to take a look at them and ask questions on them on what we're doing.
To, um, to the Board of Finance members, you have the summary in front of you? Instead of having Mr. Pergola try to read through each one of these and explain each one?
Yeah. If we could, I have it open. If we could just hit the highlights, Mayor. Mr. Pergola can just hit some of the highlights, some of the big ticket items here. We don't have to go line by line, but.
And if they are in any kind of priority by school? In, um, because it's all the schools here. So if some of them you feel are more in priority than other schools?
Okay. So, so if you look at, um, if you look at Forbes School and if you look at the, if you look at the final page, that has been prioritized. There has been some numbers put to it, but we didn't include it in the total because we're not quite sure of the, where that school is going to end up being in the future. So it's prioritized on there for school, not for the whole district, like what needs to be done through the whole district. So, so if you skip past Forbes because of that reason and you go down to Vogel Wetmore, I guess the larger items is what we, is what we would be talking about. The roof system in Vogel Wetmore is, uh, is in dire need. There's been multiple, multiple problems over there over the years, including this year, once I started getting involved, I can see that that is a very high priority. The other part in Vogel Wetmore is, um, is the heating system over there. Another antiquated system that we are consistently repairing and really, um, I didn't put the dates down there, but I did have the dates on when these, when these buildings were renovated. You know, they're all in the upwards of 20 to 35 years since the last time I've been touched. So pretty much at the end of the useful life without spending a ton of money on repairing them. And so those two big items, the ADA compliance are, are items that, if you look on this, uh, you don't have the facility study, but it's, it has to do with grab bars and it has to do with handrails and reconfiguring some certain spaces to make it ADA compliant. So that's, that's where that lies. If you look at TMS, uh, the big, the big, uh, the big number there, there's two big numbers at TMS, uh, the ADA compliance upgrades and the roof, which is, is, uh, has been going for a while. There's two stages to the roof. This is the metal roof that has been kind of a problem over the years with leaking in all different locations. So we have, um, we've had done a study on it. Yale associates went through, they, uh, they presented their findings and, and came up with a budget for that. So that is a major, uh, in need of repair. Southwest, again, the roof over there, uh, the roof over there to do the entire thing is, is over, is over a million dollars. So what I did is I took a look at some of the things that we can do to help with the leaking over there. And we have a lot of, um, if you look at Southwest, um, uh, roof stormwater overflow upgrade. You know, that's, it's not replacing the roof, but that's definitely helping when these overflows don't happen to stop it from flooding. So I do have on there repair asphalt shingles, um, not replace. So that is something that we threw in there just because the entire project was, uh, you know, was, was over a million dollars also. And that roof is a little bit newer. And again, I don't have the years, but I can, if I think back, that is much newer than a Vogel Wetmore roof. So it's not, it has dire need, but there, there's repairs that have to be done to that. Our torn Ford, if you look at that, that chiller replacement, that is a big number right there. Last year, at the end of the year, from what I was told and doing my research on this, that we, we spent a little bit of money to get that thing at least through that summer season last year. And that took quite a bit of, um, putzing around. That is, that is, uh, end of its useful life also. Even though we spent some money on it last year, it got us through. But it's something that we're having a difficult time, um, bringing it up, up, up to standards right now because of the age of it and, and what has gone wrong with it. The, um, the curb replacement up there, um, that, if you've been up to Torn Ford, you'll, you'll see that the curbs are a mess up there. So that is something that I would say is on very high priority. I do have number two next to it and not number one, where I do have the chiller replacement is number one for obvious reasons, you know? You don't really need a curb. It's nice to have it there, but you really need a chiller system in the summertime. That you don't need a curb, but the point is, um, as far as priority goes. So those are, those are probably the biggest ones. If there's any other ones that I missed that you had questions, um, these, uh, feel free to ask.
Mr. Pergola, the, the chiller replacement, that's not like a refrigeration system. That's air conditioning, correct?
So air conditioning, underneath air conditioning is refrigeration. So yes, it is the refrigeration. It is a, it's a, it's a unit that's outdoor that takes your chilled water. It chills, it brings it into the building and then from there we chill the building. We have air cooling with it, not heating, it's cooling when we talk about a chiller.
Right. But this is, that, that's, that's for the building. When I initially saw chiller replacement, I was thinking cafeteria, something in the cafeteria, like walk-in cooler or something.
Yeah. Sorry about that. No, it's HVAC.
Okay.
Floor is open, other questions? Yeah, Mrs. Trab?
Um, on Torn Ford, on the curb replacements, are those, because I don't remember where you're talking, on the sidewalk around the building, are those just concrete or are they granite curb replacements?
Um, looking at the cost, I don't have an exact on that. This came out of facility study, so there was no specifications drawn up on it so far other than curbs need to be replaced. So that would have to be something to be looked at, whether they were granite or concrete and how they would be inlaid. I believe those were just laid on top instead of being footed down the way they should have been. So.
Okay. And, and I think the follow-up question I have, it's probably with every, every school, building, whatever, is are the contractors who do your plowing, if you don't do it, are the contractors who do your plowing or maintenance, are they responsible to replace anything that they've damaged during the winter?
Yes. In their contract, it is, uh, part of their job to come back and be placed. And we have a brand new contractor this year for three years. And it was, uh, I think I know what he damaged, but there was so much damage up there. It's tough to tell what he damaged as opposed to the last couple of years, to be honest with you. The guy we have right now, the company I have right now is very meticulous. So, but it is, to answer your question, it is in their, um, contract to repair.
So I just don't know if any of this that we're replacing, we, we can't bill any of that out?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah.
Right here, right here.
There we go. Okay. Just to the curb issue, um, it has been sort of a long running issue for us. We've been hearing about it, not only in the facility study, but, um, from the faculty and staff who work in the building and so on. So, you know, there, while there may have been, according to Mr. Pergola, maybe some slight damage from this year, uh, maybe. It really, the curbs have been in rough shape at Torn Ford for, for quite some time. And it, they're really just at the point where we need to replace them. We wouldn't be able to, um, to just chase down contractors for, for minor repairs. They're, they're pretty thoroughly destroyed.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Any other questions on capital proposal?
I just, uh,
Mr. Wright?
I'm just curious on the back page, the snow removal equipment?
Yeah. So we, we, we also have to, so when we have this, the contractor, they take, they take care of the driveways. We have all the sidewalks to still take care of, um, some of the loading areas to take care of. And the equipment we have is, is just old Kubotas. And they, and they, again, we passed them this year. We, uh, we spent some money to get them repaired, um, to get, you know, to get ready for the summer. And thank goodness we didn't have a tough summer, but they're in dire need. They, they're all in the age of 20 to 30 years old, each one of these things. And they got some heavy use, but another question?
The contractor won't do it or?
Not part of his contract. Uh, I don't think it ever was, I'm going to be honest with you. We kind of, um, went off of the contract that's been in place. And most of the guy, most of them won't. It's a whole nother, it's, it's all snow blowers and tractors and things like that to move. When these guys come, they come with big equipment. They do the big areas and we kind of clean up around them using these machines.
I have one additional question.
Yes. Mrs. Trab?
Um, I apologize because I'm, I'm new to this, so bear with me. The turf field replacement contingency, is that something that is already in place? Or are we looking to utilize? I know Mayor Carbone, you mentioned something about having, where are we at with that fund now?
For the, I'm sorry, for, I, I was trying to look up an HVAC grant opportunity on the state's website. So I apologize, I zoned out a moment. You're talking about the roof funding?
No, it's to the THS. Turf field replacement contingency is a million. Is that something we already have or are we inching toward that? Is this us using the million we already have? I, I apologize. I don't know the history behind it and where we are at this point.
So the, um, over the last several budget cycles, the Board of Education, um, was sinking funds, uh, from surpluses. And I think there was one year they actually budgeted for turf field improvements. I think we're still working with Mr. Petrazelli, um, to pull all those funds because they were moved around a bit from the Capital Reserve Fund, which is Fund 313, uh, moved into, um, a Fund 8,000. So we have to pull all those together and I'm not sure the exact amount that we have. And I don't know if John or Erica, you've had any luck ferreting out where we are with that final amount? The journal entries, there were journal entries in and out. So I'd look to the Board of Education. I know that you've been approving these and, um, hopefully have a better number. I think it's somewhere around $600,000 to date. Does that make sense? Yeah. And I'll get that firm number for you. And that 600 includes the, um, transfer that was requested in June of 2023. And that was the surplus from fiscal year 23.
That was 200,000, Mayor?
200, yes. Yeah.
But it makes it the 600, because I think we were at four the last time we checked.
Yes. Yeah. I don't, I hate to rely on my memory, especially at the end of a crazy day. So, um, so towards that $1 million. And obviously none of the million is, um, is in the column for the current fiscal year request, is it?
Yes.
Fiscal 20, oh, so is it the expectation to follow up on Mrs. Trab's question? That that turf will be replaced in fiscal year 25?
No, it's a 10-year.
Somebody else go ahead. Yeah. We'll have to take that, that $1 million that's in the capital plan should be out. It's being funded through the surplus of the general fund. And we have about 600,000 in there. I think there's, and we also do, just to let you know, we also annually do a maintenance for the field, which is actually extending the life a bit. So we'll make an adjustment to the number to remove that 1 million. Because it's not, it shouldn't be getting paid out of cap.
Did the, um, remote listeners hear what was said?
Yes. So that's going to be removed?
Adjusted. I heard adjusted. To reflect what's in reserve, Mrs. Pesky.
And is not the building committee continuing to pursue a, uh, a grant for the turf fields?
So the CAF 2030 application that was submitted in the winter last year, I believe that was not funded. A CAF 2030 committee met last Friday and that did not get funded. But this turf field wasn't a part of that, correct? This turf field.
Well, this is not part, was not part of that anyways.
The existing field at THS, that we had to have, we set money aside so that at the 10-year mark, when it needed to be revamped, we had the money ready and not having to just come up with a million dollars at one time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm sorry, my one, my last. Yep.
I'll go ahead, Ms. Trab.
My, my last follow-up would be then, when this turf field was put into place, I know, um, again, it's old history. I don't remember it the well. I know there was conversations, it wasn't turned over from the town at first, whatever. So the Board of Ed should be budgeting X amount of dollars per year over a 10-year period to replace it every 10 years? Or are we hoping that it lasts longer than 10 years? So that we don't run into a problem of being short? Because right now you're saying 600,000 you've put aside, but you need a million. So, um, how will that be? Once we replace it this time, will we be putting away every year to make sure that the money, the funds are in there?
Yeah. Our sense, uh, is at the moment that there may be, uh, some extra life in the turf fields based on our, our maintenance. So what we're doing, what we've been doing to accumulate the 600,000 approximate total is doing some of that planning. So rather than request, uh, you know, a million dollars in capital or a bond issuance, our goal has consistently been to meet that obligation through sort of careful, long-term planning alongside the city, whether it be transfers from our surpluses or other sources of funding. So we certainly, we have to reach the million dollar goal. We just, uh, hope not to have to ask the, the city to issue a million dollars all in one go.
To answer your question, Mrs. Trab, the field is, um, the turf is designed to last for 15 years. I just got a message from someone on the building committee. So, um, the, the idea was to update it, maintain it at the 10-year mark. But I don't think that there's, we don't really have anything in place to determine exactly when and how that'll be done.
So, so I'm confused. So we, at first we started the conversation with, um, the million dollars is being asked to be put into the turf replacement account as a request. But that should be adjusted to approximately $400,000 request in order to meet that million dollar in that fund account. And then it was said that we are, um, planning to do this at the 10-year mark, which would be 2025. But now that, that, that is not valid?
When is the 10 mark? I don't know that anybody said it was 2025. We're just, we're, um, we're just out, we're setting the money aside so that we don't have to come up with it all at once. So the intent isn't to do the work next year. If we're only six years into it, or not even six years into it. Was it six years? Seven years into it. So we still have three more years that we're setting the money aside to get to that point.
I think to address your concern, Mr. Bayes, uh, it's just an error, the $1 million. Mr. Petrazelli has already indicated that he will be correcting it.
Okay. Yeah. That's what I'm just trying to make clear because obviously this is a 2425 capital request. And if we've still got three years, then that capital request can be downgraded. Do you, are you thinking like 100 grand this year? Or 100 grand over the next three years to get to the million or something like that? Is, is that going to be the case? Just because when we look at a request, I've got a request in front of me for the 2425 fiscal year capital plan. Like this isn't a five-year plan, it's not a 10-year plan. This is for 2425. So I just want to be clear, but I think, Mr. Corey, you answered my question. That should be adjusted and brought back to this board, correct?
If the Board of Finance is asking the Board of Education to vote on a new capital plan and send it to you, that would not be possible. But certainly our, our team will send an updated number for that item as soon as they can.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I just, like I said, if, if you're looking at this from our side of the desk, you're coming and asking for a million dollars for that account, right? So you're asking for a million dollars, but you're not truly asking for a million dollars. It doesn't give us an accurate picture of what is being requested for this capital year. Does that make sense?
I suppose it does in a roundabout way.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. And then just really quick on the middle school roof. Now, we have funds in place for that, correct?
So let me take the, um, question with regard to what funds have been set aside. Just as a walkthrough history, um, in 2018, when the voters said that they would approve bonding for $700,000 for middle school roof work and $700,000 for middle school window work. The roof work was done right away. And we bonded the $700,000, but because it qualified for school construction grant reimbursement, we didn't need all 700,000. We received $378,000 in reimbursement. So $378,000 is sitting in our bonded projects account for middle school roof work. In addition, uh, after the first round of COVID relief funds came through, the Board of Education sees the opportunity to use some of those funds to replace the middle school windows. And we had to go back to the voters to seek authorization to reappropriate that $700,000. Those have not, that bonds, those bonds have not been sold yet. But when the roof work is ready to be done, between the 378,000 sitting in the bonded projects account and the $700,000 of bonding, we're at $1,078,000.
Okay.
So that's where you see that 1.1 million dollars in city funds?
Yeah. Yeah. I see it in the right-hand column. So is, is the $500,000, um, additional expenses for that project then? Where, where is that?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Where's that half a million dollars come from?
After, after the facility study was done and we have it in hand, it, it came in much higher than was anticipated. So that $500,000, um, is to cover the additional cost. Right. And that also, that's also eligible for the reimbursement of the, of the OSGNR program.
So the 500, the 500 is or, or the entire amount?
No, 72% of that. If you look on the, if you look on the final page, um, it's broken down a little bit better there where you can see, um, what is being reimbursed towards the middle school.
Gotcha. I see it.
$774,000 reimbursed on the projects we were looking to do there.
Okay. And then, so the same would go with that reimbursement for the Vogel Wetmore roof, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Mayor, if we can, um, I, I know obviously we're not going to put it back in front of the Board of Ed to vote on a new capital plan, but I would like an idea of, of what the actual number request is from the Board of Education, um, for capital.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
It does. Yes.
Okay.
And I think it's the proper way to do that is, um, have the board go back, review it. I do think it would require the Board of Education's vote to submit a modified capital plan. That would be part of the Board of Finance's budget adoption deliberation.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's fair to the Board of Ed and fair to us to have, um, you know, to have their accurate request in front of us. So that way, when it comes time to make decisions, we have, um, all the information we need.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a nice paper trail as well, so that when we look at this again next year, we'll have that paper trail as to how this was done. Uh, Mr. Anderson, you have had your hand raised patiently for a while.
We're getting the hang of the Zoom thing, so it helps. All right. Just one little thing to, to point out, while, while we correct the error and get this updated. I'm comparing this year's request to a memo sent from Mrs. Ilbomsky, December 30th, 2020. And I want to recognize, we have new members on both boards. And, you know, anytime there's new people, things change a little bit. But if it's possible, I still have this in my, in my email. I could send it back to you, Mayor. The Board of Ed for fiscal year 2021, 2022 gave us a five-year breakout of their capital plan by school and by fiscal year, all the way through '25, '26. I loved that. It was very easy to read and it very clearly answered some of the questions that I heard Mr. Bayes asking, saying if we need a million for the turf, we need to budget 100,000 a year for 10 years. Made it, made it very easy to see the intent behind the numbers. Maybe not for this year, because we ought to just get this clarified real quick before the current thing. But if it's possible, I would love to see us get back onto that five-year view for these capital projects. It really helps in seeing where the most urgent things are, where the nice-to-have things are and where the things we can plan for in 3, 5. It really helps in seeing where the most urgent things are, where the nice-to-have things are, and where the things we can plan for in three, five years out.
Duly noted. Was everybody able to hear him? I was struggling to hear him. Did you hear what he was asking?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the primary driver of a somewhat more condensed packet of information is, is just that Mr. Pagola came on the job relatively recently and really was forced to dive into capital planning. So, so we, we, I think, did the best that we could in the, the relatively limited time span that he was available to us. But we do have those old documents and it's certainly possible in the future to, to look ahead. But I would imagine it's a significant amount of work right at the middle of the budget cycle to do that for this year. So I would say that the best assessment I have for you, Mr. Anderson, is that at least for this year, we, we have prioritized our needs. And that the board went through this pretty thoroughly, which is why you see things that are sort of the obvious priorities, like the roof projects and things like that, things that we really desperately need. So I, I totally see where you're coming from. Just sometimes things don't work out with the amount of man-hours you have before deadlines. So I would just point to the priorities that are on the current iteration of the plan as our priorities for the year.
Of course. I mean, we all have the same deadlines and the same requirements every year, but it, it, it would be very helpful moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other questions and any?
Wendy's got.
Yeah. Okay, so I haven't figured out how to do the little hand thing, Chris, that you were doing. I'll figure it out. So just to be clear, and I just want to make sure because again, if you're going to modify this capital plan before becomes part of their, their whole budget request, the amount that's reimbursement eligible says 72 to 73%, but the amount in that column matches the amount they're requesting. So should we assume that that column is actually going to be only 72 or 73% of the amount that we're requesting? In other words, it's 100% right now.
You're, you're basically going to see the same exact sheet. And that.
So what you're looking at is, what you have to look at is under the total? And then you'll see that OSGR replace is.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement is 3.156, not 4354.
Where, I apologize. Where's 3.1?
Right, the, the, the column that comes right down the middle, under 2425 on the second page.
I got you. Okay, so it's instead of being, got you. So instead of being 4.3 million.
Yep.
Okay, it's going to be that. And, and I just do want to clarify, I, I think the, the point being made about the, the turf field replacement, it's not a roundabout way. The reality is in this capital plan, you're asking us to approve a million dollars. And the reality is you're not asking for a million right now. So we just make sure we understand what you're asking for in this capital plan is what you are, well, you're asking for. So it says a million dollars and you're saying you don't need a million dollars. So I just want to make sure we understand that. That's why we're saying we'd like you to modify it. What, what are you looking for this year? Thank you.
Understood.
Any other questions? Or comments, including Board of Ed? I don't know if you have any other comments that you wanted to?
I have, I have one more question. Forbes School, you had said in the beginning that you did not include that total in here?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the reason for that?
Just because we're not sure what's going to happen with the school at this time. So we did some stuff this year that were safety and really needed to be done irregardless of what's going to happen with the building. This stuff needs to be done. It depends on what we're doing with the building.
Right, right, okay.
We did vote for that school facade.
Yeah, and I saw work on that this past week. I drove by and saw work.
See them working on on Saturday.
So, yeah, what we did is, is we saved it off. So earlier in the winter time, I had them go up there and knock off the concrete because there was big chunks. So since then, the weather got better and he went and he parched it in. That's not revamping what you guys, you know, are expecting on that because again, not sure what's going to happen with the building. So it's, it's safed off. So no pieces of concrete are going to fall on anybody's head if they do use that door. That's what the work was done last week.
Everybody's taking notes, so I don't want to rush anybody. Any other thoughts or questions or recommendations?
So just, I just want to clarify for everyone. So if we were to redo this right this second and had a printer and read, re-give it to everybody, we would be asking for 1, 1.552 960. That's what we would be asking for. So the way this is lined up and the, the reimbursable number wouldn't change because Mr. Pagalo has pointed those all out. It's just, he hasn't been here that long and he picked up on the turf field and I didn't see it. So I should, I should have grabbed that when I was looking at it because it's in fact not capital. So I just want everybody clear on the adjustment we're going to make. And what we would be asking for, for facilities. We also have the IT piece. We're going to go over in a second.
Okay. And if it's helpful in your spreadsheet, I know it's, it's counterintuitive. You know, you need a million dollars to do the turf field replacement, or we assume it's going to be a million dollars. But there are funds that are set aside. So maybe another column that says other funding sources that might reflect how that further reduces that expense. So it's not a perfect science, but we'll get there. All right, if there are no other questions, this did not require any kind of votes. It was just an opportunity to review it. But if the board will take up some of the recommendations and then present a modification to that plan, that would probably be helpful before our joint meeting for budget adaption.
We also have the technology capital budget.
Yeah.
I believe it's in the packet.
We did, it's not a part of the attachment, but wanted to walk us through it. If it was the docu, those were part of the documents that were sent to the Board of Finance. It's just, we don't have those pages behind our tab.
Okay, I'll just, I'll go over them briefly. So.
Yeah, please.
Rachel was good enough to put this together for us. We're asking for 1.5 million and we have seven projects, four of which we've prioritized as number one. The first being where we're asking for 400 Chromebooks, which is approx, approximately going to be 123,600 dollars and also the licenses that go with them for $16,000. And this is because of the expiration of the applications that the kids use. So this is something that we have to do every few years and that timing is coming up. We're also asking for $500,000 for, to align our current phone system with the high school phone system. So that's obviously a high priority too. So, and that's for 500,000. So those are the big-ticket items that are number one priorities. And then we have three, number two, we delineated and they are interactive. Our smart board, our smart boards for the teachers and there are another 30 of those is going to equate to 142,140 dollars. And also going to do infrastructure upgrades to line all our buildings. That's going to encompass switches, access points. And that's approximately 203,000 dollars. And also some laptop replacements for staff, which is going to be 51,500. And those all equal 1,516 and 240 dollars.
All right, questions on the technology budget? I, I do. Is Chromebook still the right way to go?
I'll defer on that one.
Are Chromebooks, not is.
Hi, Rachel Vian. So I guess it depends on what you're asking. We are a Google district. We utilize Google Classroom and the Google Suite. So Chromebooks are, you know, widely utilized in, in all of our schools besides the high school at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
There are no other questions. Thank you. Okay. All right. If there are no questions on the capital plan or the technology capital budget, then I think we can move into item two. And this is, I know I was meeting with the superintendent and business director right before this meeting. And they were asking, you know, what can they expect by way of questions on the budget performance reports? I did share with them, this is our standard operating procedure. We receive them and accept them. So I'm going to call this as a motion to accept the Board of Education budget performance reports. Do I have a motion? So, thank you, Ms. Pesky, and a second by Mr. Anderson. All right, and now the floor is open to any questions on the budget performance reports. Hearing none. Oh, one. I'm sorry, Mrs. Trab.
Again, just because I'm learning again. And I think a conversation about it quickly at one of our Board of Finance meetings. So all of the encumbrances that you have on your monthly budget reports, those are already purchase ordered, ready. There's already a dollar commitment to it. And then every month as you exhaust the encumbrance, you put it over into the expense line item. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so all of these have already been, and, and the one I don't know about is, so your electricity and your gas, there, there's already preset amount. I don't know how that works with, with the school. Because we don't have it for, yeah, you don't have it for oil, but you do have it for gas and electricity. Is that, those are already committed funds?
Yeah, or we, we will just create the P O or encumber the budgeted amount on the, on the ones that we don't have contracts for.
So those, on those two utilities, you're just, and I don't want, I hate to use the word, you're just making the assumption based on prior history, that that's probably what you're going to encumber for the current year.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing and hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Moving into item three and I I'm going to apologize to the board chairs. I put this on the agenda last minute Thursday and did not have a chance to communicate to the board chairs, but I did meet with the superintendent and your business director. So in December of 2023, we received a transfer of funds from the State of Connecticut, DAS. This was school construction grant reimbursement for the Forbes School Roofwork, which happened back in 2013, 14, 15, somewhere around there. And the, the grant had not been closed out. And whatever the state was doing to close out their accounts, they realized there was this retainage that continued to be held by them. So in December, they sent it over to the city. When, I know. Yeah, 10 years later. So it sent us into a little bit of a flurry of what do we do with this money? It's, it's revenue that dates back to a 10-year-old project. We did reach out to the auditors, you know, the, the default when you have a situation like this is that it would go into the general fund as miscellaneous revenue. But the, the question to the auditors was, is there a way for us to move these funds into this Board of Education's capital reserve account to be used, particularly because there is a roof project that is going to be done? Is there a way for us to move this into that account? The auditor said, yes, it is, but of course it requires an action by both boards. So to the Board of Education, the motion that we would be looking for an affirmative vote would be to approve the deposit of $30,840 received from the State of Connecticut for school construction grant reimbursement for Forbes School Roof Replacement that occurred in 2013 and request the Board of Finance authorize the funds to be deposited into Fund 313, which is your capital reserve. So.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Corey, and a second, Board of Ed, second, Mrs.
Point of order, the Board, Board of Ed has not been called to order yet. We can't take a vote until one of you calls us to order.
It's a joint meeting that has been called?
Doesn't each chair have to call? We've done that in the past. I don't think you can call us to order, can you, Your Honor?
As a joint meeting, yeah, I think that's a standard operating procedure for joint meeting.
You can do that. So could we have called this to order as well?
Yes. It's a joint meeting.
Well, yeah, we, members of our board have, have participated in the voting, so I would certainly consider us in order.
Well, we have participated.
On earlier motions, Mr. Prentice and I certainly, I can't hear anybody else, but we've certainly cast votes when called. So I would consider our board in order, but if for your purposes, you would like me to hear motion specifically from our members, we certainly could. Okay, then we would hear a motion as read by the mayor on behalf of the Board of Education. Moved by Mr. Kisco and seconded by Ms. Hona. It's their discussion, the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Motion carries on the part of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Okay. So then to the Board of Finance, what we're looking for is a motion to approve the request for the deposit of $30,840 received from the State of Connecticut for for construction grant reimbursement of costs expended on the Forbes School Roof in 2013. These funds should be transferred to the Board of Education Capital Reserve Account for future roof projects. Do I have that motion from the Board of Finance?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ayana Cito. And questions to the Board of Finance?
Question.
Yes.
So my first question would be, and it, it might be irrelevant at this point, but going back to that actual project, how was that, were, were these funds ever included in revenue to be reimbursed to us? Or these are in addition to what we had recorded that year as revenue reimbursement? And then my second question would be, if we're making a motion to transfer into the Capital Reserve Fund, are they going to be considered restricted for roof replacement? Or are they just going to go into the Capital Reserve Fund and then potentially down the road be used for something else because they're not restricted for the roof replacement?
So question number one, because this is revenue that is over 10 years old, you know, we would have to do a little bit of research to go back to find out in the budget adaption. What did we, what did we anticipate for that revenue? Is it deferred revenue because it wasn't received in the year that it was budgeted? And that's why we reached out the auditor, to the auditors for some advice on this. They were perfectly comfortable with the Board of Finance taking this action on the Board of Education's request. So I think we're fine and in audit, this should meet any of the requirements for action that was necessary to, to deal with this 10-year-old revenue item. Yes, the question, your second question was, once these are transferred into the Capital Reserve Account, are they earmarked for purpose, roof purposes only? The answer is yes. That's what the motion reads for future roof projects. However, that doesn't exclude the possibility that once roof work is done and there's surplus funds available in that line item, that the Board of Education couldn't come back to the Board of Finance and say, we didn't need that $30,000 for the roof work. We finished it. We are requesting the funds be transferred for IT purposes or some other purpose. But always when we do all of this, it is to create a paper trail so that there's always, for audit purposes, there is a paper trail, but also for the respective boards to understand what are we funding with the taxpayers' dollars and how accountable are we holding each other for that? So, other, did that answer both questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Other questions on the motion? Other questions on the motion for capital reserve? Hearing none. I'm going to call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you. It's not a lot of money, but every little bit helps. So item four. This, I, this is a motion to the Board of Finance. I will entertain a motion to transfer the sum of $52,422 and 72 cents of surplus funds from the Board of Education's general budget fiscal year 23 into the capital reserve account for IT projects to be determined. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Do I have a second?
2023.
Fiscal year 23. Yes. The surplus from fiscal year 23. So they ended fiscal year 2023 actually with $252,422 and 72 cents. In June, the Board of Education, Susan Lebowski at the time, came to the Board of Finance and said, we're still working on the final numbers. We believe we're 250,000. And she, at that time, requested $200,000 of the surplus be moved into the turf field account. The Board of Finance took action on that request in June, and now we are looking at that final amount now that we're obviously much finer tunes to the 52,422.72. I, I need a second on the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ayanezito. Okay. Questions? More questions?
I guess, Mayor, I guess a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Bayes.
So, so that, that's, that's what the, the surplus was actually a quarter of a million dollars. But when we voted, yeah, when we voted to put 200,000. So when we were speaking earlier and there were 600,000 in that turf account, is, is that now 800,000, or is that still reflective? It was four and it's now six?
It was four. The action taken by the Board of Finance in June created the $600,000 capital reserve line item.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
I mean, I, I think, just a quick comment, I think keeping with tradition, we're always happy to take those surpluses and put them into capital, especially whether it's IT infrastructure or any type of capital. So, you know, any, anytime we, we have a surplus and as the board members and business office considers their end of the years, the more money there in a surplus, the more money we get to put to, towards capital, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Can I? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wright.
So the $52,000 could be applied to the IT numbers we saw previously for next fiscal year?
Theoretically. So his question was, could the 52,000, once it's put in capital reserve, could it be used to offset the fiscal year 25 request for IT technology capital investment? Theoretically, yes, it could.
Well, that number would need to be amended also.
Oh, they're not asking to do that yet? I think their request for their technology budget stands as presented at the 1.643. Was that the number? And in all fairness to both boards, I know that that capital reserve account has been somewhat of a mystery. You know, with changeover in staff over the years. I think perhaps at our next joint meeting, we could take a few minutes to review what is actually in capital reserve. I think I see Mr. Bragola's head nodding. It's nice to know what you had, Mr. Petrozeli's agreeing. It's nice to know what you have in that capital reserve. That capital reserve is controlled by the Board of Education. The city has no control over. Once we move these funds into capital reserve, it is under the control of the Board of Education. However, the limitations or caps that you have on it are dictated by what those funds were approved to be spent on. So this 52,000 would be approved to be spent on IT. The $30,840 is approved to be spent on roof work. Any change in that spending plan would require the Board of Education to come to the Board of Finance with a recommendation that it be moved around. But I, I do know that that account 313 is somewhat of a mystery, and we need to eliminate that. Mr. Corey, you had a comment?
I do, and I apologize. I recognize that you have a motion on the table. But just in regard to that issue, it, I think would be helpful as well if you all were able to dive into the records of this board just to determine which dollars are earmarked for what?
Yes.
We certainly have no desire to run afoul of a Board of Finance vote taken six years ago, but it's, it, it could happen if we aren't a little bit diligent about that when we go to review it.
Which is why I like the paper trail of a motion made that specifically says, because that's just as important as seeing it written in the line item, line item A, line item B. Mrs. Trav, you have been patiently waiting for your question.
No, I, I apologize. So is this, again, I apologize, two, two simple questions. Is this surplus atypical of the Board of Education? Have we had surpluses in the prior years? And then the second question, I think maybe might directed toward Chris Anderson because he's an accountant. Is there a way that the Board of Education, is it appropriate? Is there a way that the Board of Education in that capital fund, capital reserve fund, can set up line items saying restricted for, restricted for, or is that not appropriate in that type of accounting? Because that would help with us talking about going back in records for earmarking. If everyone had a line item that said restricted for, they would carry forward. We wouldn't have to go back into records. I don't know if it's appropriate or not, though.
In most cases, as long as the, the, the subaccounts roll up into the primary account where it needs to be, most people would agree. You can label things as, as much or as little as you want. And it's, can be helpful to have data available. If we put it into a subaccount, it's easy to track, it's easy to see. You know, our chart of accounts follows a fairly standard format, and specific questions about appropriateness have to go to the auditors, really. But speaking generally, I don't see why not. It also might be helpful to, to the Board of Education in, in doing their current year plan for today and then the five-year plan for next year, to see if something costs a million and we have 600 set aside and we're budgeting 100,000 moving forward for the next few years. It all goes into that same easy-to-read format, and I think we'd take a lot of the questions and, and answer them right away. I think that's a great idea.
So that answered your second question. Your first question was, was this, is this typical of surpluses year over year? Again, keep in mind that the original surplus as presented back in June was 252,000. At that time, I think there was a sense of urgency to move 200,000 into the turf field line item in capital reserve. And that action was taken that evening. So yes, I would say that this is typical. Last year, the year before last, it was a much larger surplus, and there was no request to move that surplus into their capital reserve. When I was meeting with the superintendent and the business director prior to this meeting, I expressed, as I expressed to the prior administration, that I would always hope that the default would be to always ask for those surpluses to be moved into capital reserve. I think it's consistent with the promises that are made to the taxpayers when a budget is approved for educational purposes. If they're not used in an operating budget and there's a few hundred thousand dollars left over, moving into capital reserve makes sense. If you'd asked me that question 10 years ago, when our fund balance was a smidge of what was recommended by our bond rating companies, I wouldn't have said that was the default we should lean to. But we are now in a position with a 10% fund balance, 10% of our operating expenses, that it makes sense that the default for year-end surpluses should come to this board for discussion. Other questions or comments?
No, I, I would just like to add, and I appreciate that, and having, have served on the Board of Education, I know it's nice to have a surplus because we didn't back then. We had problems with special ed. I think my only, my only comment would be if there's surpluses year after year, you hear this everywhere, it's not just Torrington, it's endemic of everywhere, that there's just this, this perception that the classrooms don't get any money. They don't get any money for whatever it is, instructional supplies or things like that. So to have the surplus is great, to put it toward capital projects, but could that money be better utilized for actual classroom student-based instructional or non-instructional supplies in the future? And I know you can't budget for that, and I know there's years that they are over budget, but to put it into a turf field fund when it could be used toward instructional supplies might, might be, might be frustrating for some people.
So I don't mind, and I'm looking to the board as I say this. I believe it was the year before last, there were surpluses that far exceeded the $500,000 that was left on the table. And the board did reallocate those funds to purchase some reading programs or reading curriculum.
That, that's correct. On a number of occasions in my time on the board, we've certainly allocated funds that we reasonably believe at the close of the school year would be surplus funds to a variety of operational, educational needs. Also, in my time on the board, which is longer than I would care to admit, and certainly longer than I ever expected, we haven't frozen budgets, you know, like it used to be. We haven't frozen hiring like often used to happen. So I would say our surpluses are usually due to things that we can't really control for. We find ourselves actually in the positive position some years that special education costs come in lower than anticipated, which wasn't always the case in Torrington, as those of you who've served on the board for a long time or in the past know. So our, our surpluses are usually less because of, you know, belt tightening on our part with regard to the classrooms and more for circumstances that we can't necessarily control. And as a board, we typically rely on our administrative team to let us know what they need, and if it's within our power to reallocate the funds, we do. Or if it's their opinion that we have a pressing capital need, that's when we end the year with a surplus and, and come before this board. So we try to evaluate the needs for those funds on a year-over-year basis.
Still on the motion to approve the transfer of the surplus of 52,422.72 into capital reserve for IT projects? Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So this is a special meeting. There's no public comment period. There's no further business before the respective boards. For that reason, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Mr. Corey. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for the record, it is now 6:07 PM, still March 19th, and I want to call the regular meeting of the Board of Finance to order. I think we may have lost, did we lose two of our members? So for the record, for the Board of Finance meeting, I have finance member, Mrs. Ayanezito, Mrs. Pesky, Mr. Wright, and Mrs. Trav. All right, we have our quorum, item number one. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
And second by Ms. Ayanezito. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, moving into item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from February 20th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Trav.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pesky. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item three, I'll entertain a motion. Actually, no need a motion, but just so we can run the floor for discussion and control it, I'll entertain a motion to open the review of the city Torrington Employees Retirement Fund and the Police Fireman's Pension Fund and OPEB. We have Steve Lemanski representing Hooker and Holcomb here for the presentation. Do I have the motion? Mr. Wright?
Second.
And second by Ms. Ayanezito. All in favor? All right. Floor is open, if you want to jump in.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the Board of Finance for having me here tonight. Tonight, we're going to, I'm going to be discussing the most recent biennial actuarial evaluations, and I'm going to start with the two pension funds for the city. So we're talking about the municipal employees retirement fund and the police and fireman's pension fund. Valuation date is as of July 1st, 2022. Just the agenda briefly, what I'm going to be talking about tonight, going to do a brief overview of the purpose of the valuation, go over the results, talk a little bit about the assumptions we, we looked at during our work this year. Summarize the basic results of this year's valuation, look at some trends, cover the asset information, and then look ahead to next time around. And I like to start with this slide, just as a backdrop, before I get into the results, to remind everybody, for those board members who haven't heard this before, what the valuation represents and what, what it does not represent. And if you kind of focus on the box in the middle, what the valuation does not do is change the ultimate cost of the plan. And when I say ultimate cost of the plan, I'm talking about over this, over the plan's lifetime, what the city's cash contributions are into the fund. So what I like to say is money into the fund, which are the, the city's contributions over its lifetime, have to equal money out of the fund. So money out of the fund, we're talking about mainly retiree benefits, any administrative expenses paid out of the trust. Of course, a big offset to that, and the reason why you invest the funds is to have a rate of return over time. So that's a big offset to the, the cash itself in terms of what has to be funded by the city. And then finally, all of these plans are closed to new hires. Members do continue to make contributions as a percentage of their pay into the trust as they're working, and that's another offset to the city's cost. So that doesn't change over, over the plan's lifetime. It kind of is what it is as, as the experience unfolds. What the valuation does do is take a snapshot. So the snapshot date in this, in this case being July 1st, 2022, kind of takes a look at the financial picture of the plan as of that date, and then assigns a current budget year cost. In this case, for the next two fiscal years, fiscal year 24 and 25, kind of a slice of that ultimate cost. And that's what we're talking about tonight. So the two pieces to that, which is, which is the bottom bullet here, there's the current cost, the active members still on the plan are expected to accrue a benefit as they work an additional year, their pay generally going up. The second piece is a payment against any unfunded liability. So think of that as the mortgage of the, of the plan or your basically bonding in effect through the pension fund, a payment against the unfunded liability. So there, there is 20 years to go on that as of this valuation. Terms of the results, what happened since the last time around against this biennial valuation? The funded ratio for both plans, meaning the ratio of assets to liabilities, did increase since last time. meaning the ratio of assets to liabilities, did increase since last time around. A higher percentage is better, meaning assets are covering a higher percentage of liability. So in terms of the city plan, that is at 81.5% versus 80.4% in 2020. Police and Fire is 65.4% versus 62.1% in 2020. So improvements for both plans. The ADEC, which is short for the Actuarially Determined Player Contribution, i.e. the city's budgeted contribution, is also down slightly versus last time around. So in total, roughly $5.78 million versus $5.85 million as shown with the splits on the page. And there were some offsetting factors here. In terms of investment return, if you think back to those two years, there were two very, very different years. We're talking about years ending June 30th. So the first year in the cycle, kind of a historic year in terms of returns, the funds earned 23.5%. So fantastic against the assumption of six and three quarters. The second year, which is, I mean, is consistent with what we saw across the board in the public sector, a negative 12.7% return. So very different years. When you compound that on average over the two-year cycle, on a market basis, it's approximately 3.9%. What we look at in terms of its impact on the valuation, as you know, is a smooth value. So we smooth gains and losses, phase them into the actuarial value over a period of years. Basically, you bank gains and losses and recognize them over time. So by doing that, actually, was a positive or favorable experience for the plans. It came out at 7.3%. So since that was higher than the assumption, that helped the funded ratio. It helped keep the contribution down versus the increase that we would have seen. But on the liability side of the House, there were some offsetting factors. Both plans, in both plans, there were, excuse me, in the Police and Fire Plan, there were salary increases that were higher than expected. So that's unfavorable experience in terms of the plan's perspective. And it's kind of an awkward conversation. But fewer retiree deaths on the city plan, again, from the plan's perspective, caused liabilities to be higher than we would have projected. So those losses, to some extent, offset the asset gain. But still, on balance, contribution came down a bit. Funded ratios increased versus last time. I'll talk about details in a minute as to what this means. But the only assumption that was updated was the mortality projection scale, increased liabilities by about 2/10 of a percent. And just as a reminder, as I believe you're all aware, these plans have been closed to new hires or new entrants for a period of years. So when we look at the liability in terms of how much of it's for inactive members, i.e. primarily retirees, that's about 70% on the city plan and 64% on Police and Fire. Doesn't really mean anything itself unless you kind of benchmark it against other plans with ongoing members coming and going. Those are higher than what we typically see, but it's natural because eventually, once the last member retires, those will be 100%. Just a little more detail about what we looked at in terms of assumptions. So the rate of return or investment discount rate has come down, as you might recall. Back in 2016, it was at seven and a quarter, and it's come down a couple of times since then. We did look at it again this year, just like we always do, and think about what's happened to the fixed income market, interest rates and so forth, what bonds are generating. So basically, the portfolios now for the same asset allocation versus a couple of years prior are generating higher expected rates of return. So to that end, most of our clients have taken a pause on lowering that assumption, unlike, you know, going back probably the past 10, 12 years. So we did not recommend a change for this valuation, just as a benchmark. Again, you might remember, we do a survey every year of Connecticut Public Sector Plans. So the average in the state of Connecticut excluding the state plans is six and a half, roughly. But larger plans tend to have higher assumptions. So for larger plans, like the city of Torrington, that benchmark, you're basically in line with a benchmark of 6.74%. And for very large plans, so Nazra surveys, like statewide plans, and very, very large cities in the United States, that average and median are more like 7%. So just to give you some sense as to where you stand. So more detail on the mortality projection scale. When we look at the liabilities, we're basically, part of our job is predicting how long people are going to live once they retire. The mortality table, which you are using the most recent study out there, kind of talks about life expectancies as we sit here today. But since we're projecting cash flows out into the future many years, people who haven't even retired, those life expectancies are expected to change. In general, life expectancies have gotten longer. But we did have the COVID era, right, not too long ago? And kind of the upshot of that in terms of our work, these scales are typically updated every year. But it was felt by the Society of Actuaries that due to the distortions in the mortality experience during that time, really no updates were done in either 2022 or '23. So we're still using the scale from '21, which is the most recent one available today. We'll see what happens later this year, if they're going to resume those updates. In terms of the basic results, this is a little more detail about the numbers that I talked about to start the presentation. So this is the city plan. You can see at the top of the slide, this is an exhibit actually from the valuation report. We have results, the two columns with the current valuation and the previous valuation. So in terms of total membership, it's down a bit, as we would expect, since no new members are coming in, with a shift from active, so fewer actives, more inactive. So for example, in 2020, there were 73 active members covered by the plan. In 2022, there were 58. Some of the key numbers that go into the percentage, the funded ratio percentage I mentioned earlier, in the middle of the page, the actuarial accrued liability of the plan is $54.9 million. And the number we compare against that in terms of the funded ratio is the smooth or the actuarial value, a couple lines below it, roughly $44.8 million. So about $10.15 million in unfunded liability, which is down slightly from 2020. And that's what results in the funded ratio of 81.5%. And down below, again, we are doing these biennial. So the contribution for both fiscal year ending '24 and '25 for this plan is roughly $1.26 million. Next slide is the same information but for Police and Fire. So again, a shift from active to inactive participants, with the membership down slightly from 260 in 2020 to 249 in 2022. The key numbers are actuarial accrued liability of approximately $111.9 million versus assets of $73.2 million. Unfunded liability, $38.7 million, which is down from $40.1 in 2020. And the improvement in the funded ratio from 62.1% to 65.4%.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why is the funded ratio higher for the Police and Fire than it is for the city side? Better return on?
Do you mean the other way around?
Yeah.
It's higher for the city than the fire?
City has 80. No, no, but I mean, I'm sorry, what I meant was the increase.
Oh.
So it went from 80 to 81, and then it went from 62 to 65, which is a big.
Yeah. It's not, it's kind of the net effect of not only the asset experience, but also the liability experience. The numbers change in different ways based on plan experience. So you may recall that the losses were different for Police and Fire. They were due to salary increases, whereas in the city plan, they were due to retiree mortality. So those are different factors that change the liability differently for the two plans. Without going into the weeds too much, they're not always going to move in lockstep for that reason. That's.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't because of returns.
No, 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 because the, I mean, the asset returns, I think, were pretty much the same, very similar, right?
Can I piggyback on Laureen's question, though, as to why the funding ratio is so much lower for Police and Fire? Is that just accumulation of years, not having funded?
I.
Is our catch-up lower, I guess is my question?
Yeah, no, I understand the question. So I mean, the short answer is, I don't have the entire history of the plan. And we have not always been the actuary for the plan. Now, we would have to look at, we'd have to go do a lot of historical research to see how that progression happened. But what I would say is that the actuarial methods, both are designed to drive the funded ratio of each plan towards 100% over the same period of time. So we, you know, assuming that the assumptions are met and that the city funds the actual contribution as it has in the past, eventually, both of those will get to 100%.
So hearing Mrs. Trob's question, does the fact that city employees, the pensions were negotiated out of their contracts before Police and Fire, would that impact the funding ratio? So the city's fund was closed before the Police and Fire? This were closed?
That may be a factor. Again, I don't have the timing of those two events, but that could be part of the reason.
Quite a number of years, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if there was a big gap, then that could be an important reason.
And we weren't always funding 100% of the?
Well, we have been for the last 10 years. Yeah, I hear you. I think that there were some tough years, and prior administration may have looked at that as an opportunity. But I think across the board, it wouldn't be that they wouldn't fund the Police and Fire, but they would fund city, I think, across the board. If they weren't funding pensions properly, it was both funds.
But we have been.
For the past 10 years, yes, that's a promise I made, and I won't ever break. So.
Just for point of reference, how do we compare to other communities in terms of the amount of?
In terms of the funded ratio?
Funded ratio.
I don't have the survey on the pension side as part of this deck. But I'd say at a high level, again, there's a lag on the survey because it's always based on the CAFERS, which, so it's always published like a year behind. But I believe the average in the last survey, which was actually from 2022, on a market basis, was about 74%. So one of the plans is higher and one of the plans is lower? Yeah?
Thank you. So I was going to say, I think the OPM fiscal reports that they do would disclose that. And I can see if I can find that report and share it with the board offline. But I know that the OPM is always looking for these reports, and then they prepare each municipality with each other. So I know that is available.
Slide eight shows some trends for the city plan. So the top chart is comparing the actuarial crude liability against the assets that I was discussing a few minutes ago. The purple bar being the liability, the orange bar being the assets. And then the translation of that to the funded ratio. So down below, the orange line on the funded ratio is, and that's the one that's really the published percentage, which is on a smooth basis. It's been flat over this period, relatively flat. I think it's important, though, to remember it's not apples to apples. So back in 2016, that uses 7.25% discount rate, and it was also on the prior mortality table, which was the most current table at the time, but did not predict as long life expectancy. So if we were to kind of re-measure 2016 based on the lower discount rate today and the higher mortality or longer life expectancies, those liabilities would have been higher, and the funded ratio would have been lower. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at this. We sometimes get that question. You're basically on a more conservative basis now than you were in 2016. Similar, excuse me, similar information for the Police and Fire Plan on slide nine. Again, assets against liabilities and funded ratio. Experience on the Police and Fire Plan in terms of movement in the funded ratio where that time's been a little bit more favorable because you can see a bit more of an upward trend for that plan. Slide 10 is the ADEC, i.e. the city's contribution. This is for the city plan. I think the important takeaway here, apart from the fact that the ADEC has been relatively stable over this period of time, the purple part of this chart is the normal cost. So that, if you remember, that's strictly the current cost for the active members in the plan that are still earning benefits. That eventually is going to go away because as actives retire or terminate, they're no longer accruing benefits, so that goes to zero. So the lion's share of the contribution now is the orange or the payment against unfunded liability. I just wanted to make you aware of kind of that trend. And the same thing is true of the Police and Fire Plan on slide 11. There's been, I'd say, less movement in the normal cost in the Police and Fire Plan because there hasn't been as much turnover for that group relative to the city. So the next couple of slides, slide 12 starts with the city plan, shows the cash flows, in this case, for fiscal '22. The first column is the market value. So that's consistent with what we show in the GASBY disclosure, which is always on a market value basis. So for example, beginning of the fiscal year, the market value of assets was $48.99 million. Ending value was $40.83. So that was the year that I mentioned earlier, was a negative 12.6% return. And you can see the cash flows in and out. So between the city and the employees, roughly $1.45 million coming in. Between benefits and administrative expenses, roughly $3.54 million going out. And then a negative return for that year. The smoothing effect is shown in the second column in terms of what we use for the valuation. And I think kind of the important takeaway in this year, for example, is you can see how the actuarial value started lower than market. So it started at $44.66 million, but didn't really move as much during the year. I, it didn't go down like the market value did. And that's the effect of the smoothing. You can also see that in the next year. So for example, this is, excuse me, this is the prior year, fiscal '21. So this was the year, the 23.7% return for the city plan. Market value increased from $41.2 million to almost $49 million, yet the actuarial value only increased by about $2.3 million or so. So you're kind of banking a bit of your gains in good years, and you're banking a bit of the losses in the years that aren't as favorable. The next two slides are the same information but for the Police and Fire Plan. Okay, so again, the numbers are shown on the page, both market and actuarial, kind of ins and outs for both fiscal '22, slide 14, and for fiscal '21, slide 15. Just looking ahead to. Just looking ahead to 2024, which will be here in a few short months, the next valuation date. We'll continue to look at the investment return. You know, the fact that I mentioned that we're going to keep looking at doesn't, I'm not trying to imply that we're going to propose a change, but it's just something we do because capital market assumptions do change as things like interest rate change and the outlook on equities and other investment changes. That's my formal report, Mayor and members of the board. I hope to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions? So the only question that I would ask is when we go back to page five, where we look at the assumption ratio. And I I realize that the recommendation is not to change it. But if the board decided that they did want to lower that assumption rate, that would increase our annual contributions?
That's correct.
And chip away at the the funding gap, the unfunded liability. Is that?
It would, it would increase that, it would increase that gap in the short term because the liability would go up if the assets don't change, at least not right away.
Okay.
Right.
All right. All right. If there are no other questions? Good. Thank you very much. And these numbers, by the way, are the numbers that you will see in the department budget for benefits, employee benefits.
And there is talk of bringing pensions back to the police and fire, at least.
Well, there's a lot of talk out in the public about it, but it hasn't been discussed at any of the board levels. Did you hear the question? Did you hear the statement or the comment?
I heard it.
Yeah. Is there a recommendation?
I have not heard, I have not heard any of those discussions.
Okay. All right, OPEB.
Do you have the OPEB presentation file available? No. There you go. Okay, thank you. Okay, so OPEB post, i.e. the post-retirement medical plan. OPEB stands for employee benefits, the last two, last two letters, other than pensions, kind of a strange way to, a strange acronym, but that's what we're talking about, retiring medical. July 1, 2022, again, biennial valuation. Similar agenda to pension, although I am going to talk a little bit about the annual survey that we do and a little bit of detail about how you stack up against other plans in the state of Connecticut. I already covered the concept here on the purpose of the valuation. It's the same discussion as pensions, so I'm not going to repeat that. It's it's really the same concept. The only difference here is the amortization period is 26 years instead of 20. And that's only because these valuations started at a later date than the pension plans did. They, these evaluations weren't even done till, weren't required till roughly 2008, 2009. Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to skip right to the overview of the results. There was remarkably favorable plan experience since 2020. And we did go back to the city and ask about it because it was very favorable in terms of how premiums or claims costs moved. And we did get feedback that was due to reduce claims both during and after the COVID era. Okay, so that gave me a comfort actuarially. I did, you know, being an actuary, I'm always a little bit worried that there's going to be kind of a whipsaw effect to that. So we did, we did kind of under the hood mitigate that in terms of some conservatism as to how much that is going to repeat going forward. So I just want to make you aware of that, that that is built into these numbers. But kind of the raw data did show very favorable experience in terms of the liabilities versus what we expected. There were a few assumptions we looked at. Again, the mortality projection scale, just like we did on the pension, we picked up latest scale. On the Board of Ed side, we tend to map the certified groups, basic assumptions, things like assumed retirement rates, assumed turnover, things like that. Against the Teachers Retirement Board studies that they do at the state level. So we met, we did map those over. That's something we routinely do. And then we did refresh the healthcare cost trend rates. So once the dust settled, it did result in a little, on a relative basis, kind of a slight increase in liabilities. It did not even come close to offsetting the favorable experience. In other words, there was about almost a 13% gain with respect to liability due to the favorable experience on the premiums. So it did, it did offset a bit of that, but the vast majority of that still was around once we completed the valuation results. Just to give you some sense as to where the liability kind of sits for this plan, just under half of it's with the police and fire. Okay, 21% with city, 30% with Board of Ed. That's not that different than we've seen in recent years. You are funding the benefits through a trust, as you know. And you're already ahead of 53% of the plans out there in the state, even today. 53% of the OPEB plans in the state of Connecticut are completely unfunded. Okay, that is up a bit from last time, but you know, that's just, I think that it's a very interesting piece of information. Terms of a little more detail on the survey. Again, we publish this every year. The way to read this chart is this is showing the funded ratio of OPEB plans in the state. So the one, the very tall one on the left side, that's the 53% of the plans that are at a 0% funded ratio, i.e. have not set up a trust. The the gray bars are from the prior survey the year before. And you can see that, and these are basically grouped into 20 percentage point buckets. So the next bars are, if you have $1 in the trust, up to 19.99% funded. There's 15% of the, excuse me, yeah, 15% of the plans and so forth. You are in that first bucket as as I'll get into in a moment. And just, just like we did for the pension plan, we did take a look at the discount rate. We did not recommend a change in that six and three quarter percent assumption this time around for the same reason. The median assumptions in OPEB plans in Connecticut tend to be a little more conservative. Only because, in my opinion, these plans were starting from nothing in a lot of cases. So they weren't starting from a higher discount rate that was sort of gradually being brought down. A lot of cases, they were set from the get-go. So that assumption is a little more conservative at six and a quarter percent in terms of the median versus pension plans. Just as a reminder, you know, if you were to compare the liabilities in this valuation against the GASB financial reporting disclosure, you'll see that in that disclosure, that liability is quite a bit higher. And the reason for that is even though you're funding via a trust, the asset level is pretty modest relative to liability. In fact, it's, it's less than a year's worth of benefit payments. I mean, that's not unusual for plans in Connecticut that are just kind of getting started. But GASB kind of forces your hand and says, well, in that case, we have to treat that as if it were unfunded. Okay, so we have to use an unfunded discount rate. We use the bond buyer 20 Geo municipal bond index. So that sat at, it sat at 3.54% on the valuation date. It's at a 3.65%, 63023. So lower discount rate, all else equal, higher liability. So just in case you're comparing those reports, that's the reason. I think I've mentioned that in prior presentations to the board. Mortality projection scale, we've already talked about that on the pension plans. I explained why we changed the Board of Ed assumptions and the healthcare cost trend rates. It's basically a refresh. It's not a significant change from what we used in 2020. Any questions on the assumption changes before I go on?
Oh, I have a question.
Sure.
Why are you assuming that healthcare costs, or why not you, but why is it assumed that healthcare costs will be going down ever?
Well, I mean, it's a great question. We're not assuming they're going down. It's just that the rate of increase is is expected to be lower in future years than it is currently. The reason for that is is basically mathematically. In other words, if you, if we perpetually had, you know, it used to be 10% increases, you know, 10, 20 years ago were pretty normal. But even at six and a half percent per year, if you kind of do the math and look at what healthcare costs are going to be as a percentage of GDP, it just becomes unsustainable mathematically. So the thought process is that through things like technology, better management of the healthcare and so forth, that those rates of change down the road will not be quite as high as they are today. You know, obviously, we'll see what happens, right? But 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 that's, that's kind of how the math plays out. Terms of the numbers themselves, again, a lot of detail on this page, I think. Maybe focus, might make sense to focus on the right-hand column, which is the plan as a whole. We do break. Excuse me, yeah, we do break the liability into two big chunks. The top part of the chart is for active members. Right? So even though they're not currently receiving retiree medical benefits, there is a liability or cost that it's kind of accruing towards towards that liability at retirement. So that's about 32 and a half built, excuse me, 32 and a half million for the actives. And for the inactive members, i.e. the retirees, 41.9 million. So plan as a whole, 74.4 million. And as of the valuation date, approximately $1.2 million in the trust. So funded ratio of 1.6%. So that goes to what I mentioned earlier about being kind of that first tranche of funded plans. Any questions about the numbers on this page? Slide eight goes into how we develop the city's contribution or the A-dec. So just like pension plans, there's a normal cost. Even though there's not really an explicit benefit formula, like there isn't a pension plan, there is a current accrual towards that eventual liability at retirement. So that's, that accrual is worth about $2 million for your current population. And then again, the unfunded liability that we just went over, paying that off over 26 years is, or amortizing it, is roughly 5.67 million. So we get to an actuarially determined contribution on the valuation date of about 7.67 million. We've got to adjust that number because we're doing this in advance. So for the fiscal years that we're talking about, fiscal year '24 and '25, that number comes out at about $8 million. Now, that's what the full actuarial contribution would be if if you decided to, if the city decided to and could fund that money into the trust for the upcoming year. I think the funding in more recent years have been more like 250,000, and so at a much more modest level. But the eight, I think it's important, I mean, it's still a big number, but the 8 million is not 8 million in new money because you're already paying out in the current fiscal year benefit payments of about 4.9 million pay-as-you-go. So if everything were to flow through the trust, the way it would work is you would, the city would put in 8 million, but 4.9 million would actually be paid out. Okay, so from a high-level perspective, you're looking at the gap between those two numbers. So in the, in current dollars, about 3.1. So still, still quite a bit more than what the city is funding currently. But that's, you know, I did want to make that point. And then just speaking of pay-as-you-go, and this is part of the report, so this projected benefit payments, we do include this as a standard part of our reporting. For the next 20 years, we show that pay-as-you-go cost. So four point, the 4.9 I just mentioned, that's, that was for the fiscal year we're sitting in right now, fiscal year ending '24. But due to future projected retirements and increases in healthcare costs, that number is expected to grow to about 7.8 million by 2041. Just some, just some details on demographics on slide 10. Again, this is part of the report. We show the information, both the top part of the chart is the current valuation 2022. The bottom part is the prior valuation. But if you look at the column off to the right on the valuation date in '22, you had approximately 1,400 members. This is both on the city side and Board of Ed, about 850 actives, 412 retirees, and 177 dependents of current retirees. And and the average ages are shown in the chart as well. A little more detail, and we do the same thing on the pension plans, but I didn't want to repeat it in both presentations. But, you know, how do we come up with our assumptions? How do we evaluate whether six and three quarters is reasonable? This is how we do it. And this this chart actually lands in the city's CAFER, you know, some version of it. We look at the target asset allocation of the of the of the trust. So for example, US large cap target allocation, 31 and a half percent of the assets. We run that through our model, the expected real rate of return. So real rate of return is above inflation. It's basically the the risk premium that you, that the city is expected to get paid for investing the money in equities. So 5%, we do a weighting of that. We do that for all the classes shown here. And what what our model showed as of the valuation date was an expected real return of 432. That's on top of expected long-term inflation at 2.4. Yes, inflation's been much higher than that the last year or two, but that is still Social Security's 75-year look on a best sort of intermediate case basis. And we add those two together. So raw number is 672. We say that you can generally get anywhere from 25 to 50 basis points on top of that for the reasons shown at the bottom of the chart. So certainly, we feel that six and three quarters is reasonable. We went through the same analysis on the pension plans. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor and members of the board.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions for Steve? Comments? Excellent job, as usual. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. The, moving on into the next agenda item, we actually did take care of this during the joint meeting where we accepted the Board of Education's Budget Performance Report. So I'll skip over to item number five, and I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pesky. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have not necessarily a department head, but a a really important person in our budget development, Erica Johnson, here with us. Is there anything that you needed to share this evening with the board? Okay. All right. I know the Budget Subcommittee has had a chance to meet Erica, get to know her quite well between now and the end of May, when we actually adopt a budget. City Clerk's Office, anything this evening? No. All right. We'll move on to item number six. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by Mayor and members. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
Second by Ms. Anasato. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Wright. Okay, Mr. Wright, anything this evening?
No, I'd just like to thank, uh, Dan's not here, but I want to thank Dan and the Mayor for the bonding, uh, results, which looked very good and nice report for the city.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Pesky?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Anasito?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, and I know that we lost Mrs. Trob. She had to, um, jump off for another meeting. Is Chris, oh, I see Chris's iPhone. Anything this evening? Time's up. All right, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
移到
Thank you, Ms. Anasito.
Second.
And second by Ms. Pesky. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.